Yes, I can. Can you guys hear me?
Rubbing it in.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start, even though we don't have Steve doing. I didn't hear you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call meeting order. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Josh, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
I'm here.
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 Would you have a court? Okay, we need to next on the agenda is approval of minutes, two meetings, September the eighth and September the 12th. Any questions or comments, corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from prior meetings.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve both meetings back in September eighth and September 12th. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Miniature approved. For treasure report.
Yes, that would be me. So, plans for the month of September were $2,508,637 and $57,000. Our general fund balance of $1,120,499. Maybe a little up because it was prepaid roll in September. So that's, that makes a big difference.
Any questions? Not, can I have a motion to approve the claims for the month of September?
Some of them.
I'll second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposing, motion carried. Fire Department.
Are you guys there?
September, we had fifty-six fire calls. Shows you breakdown where all we went, Detroit and in our area. Also, we rewarded grants for extrication tools, those should be here at the end of October, early November, depending on shipping. We rewarded a grant for new fire engine, hopefully get that order towards next few three months, waiting on blueprints to come back. We rewarded a $10,000 grant last week from South Madison Community Foundation for new fire hose. So that's, that order was placed and that'll be in within the next couple of months.
The grant, first one you talked about. So that stuff would be here in November.
The extrication tools late October, early November, depending on COVID and everything when they come in. Train on them for a couple of different times to be guys familiarized with them, but they're replacing tools that are probably. Extrication tool is probably twenty, twenty-five years old.
Gotta be. Yeah, a question though is, are we covered on the matching funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Jake, can we do anything with the old equipment? Is that got a?
They put making parts from last year, so.
It's done.
Yeah, we were pretty much to the point where stuff started to break. We actually had some tools out of service because we're unable to fix some parts.
Don't think we'll do it anymore.
They're worth a boat anchor if you want, if you need one. Other than that, that's about all their worth.
Yeah.
So.
Lasted a long time.
Yeah, it is.
Thanks, Jake.
Can you guys hear me?
Questions or comments?
I'm sorry, Steve is on. I don't know. Do you guys see him now? Okay.
Okay, you're promoting him. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Evening, chief.
September was somewhat of a busy month for the police department. My four bunch of little things. That worked well with the school system on our safety plans. They redesigned those from years past. So talks about our response to their situations and how we'll deal with them. Those are good talks. Park Fest, Heritage Festival, Fall Festival, parking is always an issue. So when the guys are on the duty officers on those days, we're always dealing with people, parks, county one system, anyway they choose. Always becomes an issue. It's like thunderbenders downtown. So that events, having them stacked like that is kind of getting difficult to manpower. So I don't know, future maybe don't choose to do something else, but we, we deal with it. That's a good thing for the town. I'd rather have events than not, so it's a good thing when it comes to that. You may have heard the officers be dealt with attempted murder and attempted suicide in Cary Club. Subjects been arrested, these in jail. Victim is doing better and the officers, Department of Burton, Stan Brown, that prosecutor and everything. That's able to take care. I'd say to speak at the House of Business Association meeting, that was how the GPC mortgage was one of numerous people that spoke and it was a real good meeting. Must be an annual thing that we started doing. Yeah, it opens up doors through all different towns, cities, and what everybody's doing and how it affects each other. Homecoming parade, had a great turnout, weather was great and so it went well. Officer Baker runs that as far as setting up officers, Stan Brown and Shane Isaac's, of course, for thirty-eight sixty-seven. I'm always saying stamp because he's here tonight. He's going to come to a meeting, I'm talking about. Craziest intersection.
He still did.
And I didn't even turn to look. That's everybody, it's kind of funny. They, they're prideful of their, their detailed intersection and they haven't been for years. They almost this year, there's a little question of who got to go where. Friends for Paul's have a fundraiser at the park, real good turnout, made a lot of money and I got to throw a pie and have trailer space, so it's always a good time. But again, they're always looking for help and money, so friends for Paul's, they're an asset in the town and. Point out eight hundred and sixty-three dispatch incidents in the month.
Any questions, chief? Who, chief?
Yeah.
Introduce the man back there. Maybe I do.
Officer Matt Eby?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yes. Well, he's a night shifter and there's lights on, so.
Thanks, chief. I don't see the judge.
Hello?
See all the line?
Nope. Nope.
Park, Eric?
Good evening.
Evening.
Nothing really add other than what's in my report. Quick update on playground, running to a limestone issue, which I'm sure shocked everyone up there.
Really, really?
We're working on change order to get that square way when they did the board and say, I'm sure bought lottery tickets because they were like six feet down before they hit limestone. Were. So. But we're working through that, so that's why there hasn't been much activity over there. Other than that, any questions for me?
How are we at the golfers? We're still pretty much had a schedule on where we were from last year.
We are. If you take out May, we're slightly ahead. We got killed in May.
Yeah.
With the weather, but overall, a really good year at the golf course.
Once again, this was second year in a row, I believe that the grass has stayed green still. Yeah, fairways, it's, they've done a great job out there, keep it going.
Highly helped from Mother Nature, but yeah, golf course is as good a shape as we can hope for, so.
Thank you. Planning and town manager.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, you do it. Slap me in the face, I'm sorry.
I'm filling this for Hannah Rose. I think she was what, number two at the four wedding? She's the performance here for the fall season. As far as planning, she had the breakdown here, her Brett got the numbers together. We are up about $26,000 for the month compared to last year, twenty point one. Year, for the impact fees are a huge help to that, but up about one point six million. Actually, today marks the start of our park impacting, so we'll be having that put on our website as well, make that updated for any residential properties. They'll start receiving those ones. As far as HPC, Hannah is working with the members there. They're working on an updated version of our historic preservation guidelines. It's great packet that was produced about five years ago, but it does need some updating and also it's going to reflect the new town branding. Laid out format that she put together. Also, there are about, I think maybe fifteen additional contributing buildings that were not illustrated in the previous manual. So we've got pictures there and the members are going to be working on suggestions and recommendations on how we can maintain those buildings. As far as inspections, the four zoning bills, they're working really hard with the condemned building. There are one hundred and sixteen, one hundred and twenty, what state's through. They have given an additional thirty days to allow for the rear building to be sealed. So we will be evaluating that here in the next four days and we'll get them an update on Tuesday. And then as far as structural remedy, then they have until April of twenty twenty-three, get those funds. But things are progressing well, a lot of work is being done. We're very happy with that and so is the, the members of the BBA. So they've been very diligent. Plan Commission later on tonight will have some proposals that we would like to recommend to you, recommendation for some upgrades, some additions, corrections. So I'll build that a little bit later on tonight. As far as rezones, the Beckley property is recently zoned and reported, switching from an ag property to then that SF four. And they're working hard to get a primary class. So once that is put together, we'll present that to the plan commission and be ready to see that development go underway. And as far as site development plan, we've got the Free Rivers and the Starbucks, their site development plan was approved. So they're going to start with working on infrastructure and urban amusement on there to start. And secondary flats, the way that the UDO is designed now, if that primary flats goes through the plan commission and the secondary flat will be seen in review by the planning department. As well as the technical review committee, which comprises of all of the department heads that we have for our utilities and so forth, as well as our town engineer. But we've got Arabian Point and Hudson your farms with the section three there that are very close and getting ready to get those flats that are reported. We've got a couple of stormwater documents that they need to get down, but once those are accomplished, they'll be ready to go. On development there. Subpositions are going great, moving along as, as hoped. And we've got the US thirty-six project that Scott and Hannah Rose are working with the Madison County Council of Governments. And they're looking at twenty twenty-four to start that. So they're doing all the preparation work between now and then. And then we also have a recent project that they found some funds for the town for engineering for our business park. Which is going to be very exciting to be able to connect our west side of town, your downtown district and neighborhoods here. And so we are working on a scoring process right now. We've got a group of us that are looking at the matrix and evaluating those proposals. And both of them are strong, but hopefully here by November, we'll be able to. And yeah, we've got a grant updates. We've got Franklin Street, we're getting ready to wrap up. We're going to be planting about eighteen trees next week. We're going to be picking up those with Bluegrass Farms and then we'll get our final pay application, ready to close that out with the NDOT. And then we also have our various roadways projects going very well. Right now, they're focused in on that full bird out there on North Pendleton Avenue. But all the other roads have been improved and look great and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the community, so we're very happy about that. And then just today, and then Scott's going to talk about this a little bit later on, but our Indiana Finance Authority, we are eligible for over $800,000. We originally were about $546,000. Then they heard of our interest to seek funds from Community Crossings Grant for the intersection there at South Pendleton Avenue, their reformator road. And they agreed that if we can go ahead and move this forward and get it going, that they would give us what we were going to seek from NDOT, which was about 270,000. So we're excited about that. We just had bid opening today. We're very confident, feel really good about the bidder that came forward. And, and so I think this project is going to be another great project for.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Denise. Good work. Okay, no, nobody else kicked you out.
She, she covered a lot I was going to cover, so probably the one thing that needs to come up is. The, the striping is done. We've done a couple little things to hopefully improve the traffic flow here. We can move the stop bars back. That was the McCartney drain that Denise was talking about on the bids. So they came in 200,000 less than what we expected, so we'll talk about that on bid acceptance. The cameras, we've got, now they're at the park offices, although they're not connected yet, right? Can you get it on your phone, yeah? And then we have a new employee on the street department, Michael Murdoch. He is coming, he's a mechanic. He works for Bobcat. And he's already saved us probably quite a bit of money fixing things that we may have had to buy. So. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and excuse the bomb, go ahead and make a correction. On, I called the Beckley property, okay? That, that deal's fell through.
You didn't know.
Yeah, you didn't know. That's okay, that's okay, but we're, it's public, it goes on record. But it, they backed out and I don't know how that will affect the zoning, but we'll look at it later. No, no, I just wanted to matter of record. Any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I had a question on the sixty-seven street project, any, any news on that? Still, still doing the environmental study?
That's Hannah's thing, yeah.
He has to be careful on that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Let's go to new business. First one is the three-year growth excess levy appeal. Jeff?
Yes, and this, with the document you have in your stack was put together by our financial consultants, Baker Telly through Paige. And. What it allows town, cities, municipalities to do, if your, if our three, three-year growth appeal or assessed value exceeds the state average over that three-year period. You can request a higher let. Basically, we're getting bigger, guys. Send us more of the overall pie from the state. And this is the process by which you have to do it. Paige has already has everything together, the, the numbers are there in front of you. The additional amount is, the town would expect if the appeal is granted, which should be, it's a mathematics problem. It's not a politics or who deserves it or not, it's numbers, but you do have to ask for it. It's thirty-seven thousand. If there are any questions, I will try to answer them. It's mainly a financial issue, but if we do pass this thing, the petition for appeal is on. The document itself is on the next last page up, will need to be signed and then certified by the clerk treasurer page eight. But the council tonight could authorize this petition to be filed for appeal to Texas.
And who, who signs it?
Maybe the town, every, all you, the town council.
Okay, okay. Any questions on that? What, what it for? I mean, it's just money out there. We can.
Hello? Yes. Hello?
Okay, can I have a motion on this and move to approve?
I'll second.
Got a motion second to approve the three-year growth exercise levy appeal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing.
Hello?
Here's.
Hello? Yeah, I can hear you. Hello?
That's all right. Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four repealing ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two. Jeff, won't you go that one too?
Sure, this was an ordinance that was the twenty-four thirty-two ordinance that this were, ordinance that this was repeal. Was created to create a non-reverting fund for the South Madison Fire Protection Territory. As it turns out, there were some issue, not issues, confusion with the budgeting process for twenty twenty-one, the use of those funds going forward. And there's already been, there's already a fire protection fund now created for next year when we, the green light goes on, one one. So that it was unnecessary, it creates a clerk treasurer problem as far as housekeeping and recommendation is to, for the council to repeal. That ordinance which would abolish the fund.
Any questions? Pretty simple, really.
Just as a matter of record, right now that fund has nothing in it, correct? Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I can have a motion to repeal ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two.
So.
I'll second. Thank you. Got a motion of second, all in favor of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We need to suspend the rules for this one.
Yes.
I make a motion to suspend the rules for twenty-two dash three four.
I'll second that. We have a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing. Thank you. You have a motion for the second reading on ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four.
So move.
I'll second. Motion sec, and second for second reading, twenty-two dash thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five amending the UDO.
I'll let Denise get into the specifics of the changes, but this is just a ordinance to adopt the recommendation of the plan commission. The plan commission and Hannah and Denise and the rest of the staff, Stephanie have done just an excellent job, in my opinion. On going over this UDO with a fine tooth comb. Most places, when they pass something like this, it gets passed, it never, never changed unless an emergency happens. Oh crap, we should have changed that. This group has been extremely proactive and almost monthly now they're having tweaks and changes, catching mistakes on the thing that was passed. And, and your, your plan commission has just been fabulous too, on the, the level of detail they look at this, it's, it's impressive. But all, this is, this is the one reading special. You have a favorable recommendation in front of you tonight. If you want to adopt it, just takes one reading and. This is the key, if you could.
Just, just hit that. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, and the first amendment here was regarding the wind energy system. The way that the UDO was stated before was that in the school, it was allowed permitted. That means that if they meet all the standards, they automatically can set up a wind energy system on the property. But the way that the plan commission after discussion, what they've decided is, there was three zones that it was allowed, permitted. That was agricultural one, agricultural two, residential. To give a higher level of scrutiny and review, they agreed that it was appropriate to go ahead and keep those three same zoning districts limited to those three, but have it as a conditional. So then they have to petition that before the horizontal bills. So then the horizontal bills would have the opportunity to review those, make sure that it's structurally sound, that it's going to meet the step back than all the other standards or requirements according to. So that was one of the biggest changes there, but they also added in some structural standards for ground mounted and also accessory use as far as roof mounted systems. The, the UDO as it is now, it does not allow any commercial or any type of wind energy ponds. They kept that the same, but allowing in the accessory use, we wanted to beef it up, we wanted to create some more strong, stronger language, strengthen it up a little bit. As far as the structure standards, the operational standards, a lot of those are mimicking the solar energy accessory use systems and those guidelines. And then we also worked with Chris No-9, it was great to work with Frank Switzer, the electric supervisor, electric department supervisor. As far as different provisions, as far as permitting and standards that we want to make sure that things are going to be safe for if there was any case for a fire. And just different standards that we wanted to have met as far as fire code, federal, state, local. So we've incorporated all, all of those into the changes. There's a printout goes in a little bit more detail. If you have any questions, I can definitely go over any of those. And then the additional, what I could pause there, if you had any questions on the wind energy system.
No.
Then the others, like Jeff alluded to, the plan commission and Hannah Rose have done a wonderful job. She's just been very dedicated to this document for the last year and a half since she's been here. I tell her, I, I think she knows this backwards and forwards. And she's really done a really diligent job of fine tuning it and making sure that we can apply it to where we have good standards here for our community. But the ones that basically just kind of just briefly go over it, maintenance bonds, the UDO was two years, but we want that to be held for three years. Standard is three years, so we wanted to make that upgrade. As far as bond determination letter, it's a part of a process that we want to start and incorporate the outlines to developers. What type of bonds, whether it's landscape, lighting, infrastructure, storm, you know, what type of bonds we want to see and how much those bonds need. What type of bonds, whether it's landscape, lighting, infrastructure, storm, you know, what type of bonds we want to see and how much those bonds need to. Have in in the amount as far as coverage. The fourth one is the construction process. We just wanted to give a little bit more explanation to option number two. So. When you go in, you do your construction bond, you can either construct that infrastructure first and then you can report that flat or you can post the bond and then you can report. That second option just wasn't very clear. So she's going to be adding in on your approval some details. The fifth one is maintenance bonds regarding landscaping. Maintenance bonds are usually ten to twenty five percent of the value of the board itself. The plan commission, what they agreed upon was just amount to be determined by the town. We could have put ten or ten to twenty five or up to twenty five, but they felt like that they rely on staff there for the landscaping maintenance bond, you know, just to keep that as the to be determined. The sixth amendment that they'd like to propose is regarding monument signs in the downtown businesses. Currently, we're limited for a monument sign be sixteen square foot, and that has caused some problems for those multi tenant buildings. They it's a very small font that we have to fit in maybe eight to ten different tenants. So they're proposing to increase that for a multi tenant building in the downtown district for a monument sign such as like the P and C building to forty square feet and five feet max, which is very. Similar to any of the other martial related. That that we allow as far as that any any others. Then the other is for subdivision waivers. The way I think I spoke to this earlier tonight is that. In the process, the primary plat is presented to the plan commission for review and approval. Secondary plat is within review by the plan department. In this process, there are development standards that can be. But the way the U D O currently states is that it can be weighed at the primary plat phase and the secondary plat phase. We like to limit that just to the primary plat. So that that way that if when we come to the secondary plat, if there's something that's contrary to those development standards, we want them to come back to plan position to keep those waivers. We want to put that extra step. And then the next one is just regarding drainage evidence. The U D O currently states that the county drainage board needs to approve and give release as far as any type of work adjustments. To roadways or right of ways that have water swells or easements for drainage and so forth. But we also, we've had some different water areas that have been turned over to the town of Pendleton that we would also like to have that opportunity to get that. So just added that town of Pendleton preview of the total management. And then last, there's just two different areas that we would like to add to append it be the very end of the U D O. One is regarding again those drainage covenants that need to be, there's three sections that need to be. So we just need to also bring that down to the appendix B. As well as we've learned recently from the auditor's office, the board's office, that they want prepared by those two words to be added into before the surveyors. So those are just the amendments, but very important amendments, but we would like to propose this for your consideration.
Lot of information.
The planning commission though takes this very, very seriously. And I think that entire board knows this document very well.
Yep.
I sit in a lot of their meetings and I'm always shocked at how much they can just rattle off all the requirements. So good job, planning department and plan commission.
Okay, we'll have that any more questions or comments? Okay, can I have a motion for ordinance twenty two dash thirty five amending the U D O?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion second for amending ordinance twenty two amending the U D O on ordinance twenty two dash thirty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Ordnance passed. Yeah. Okay, we'll go on this. Okay. Next thing on business is ordinance twenty two dash thirty six salary ordinance for twenty twenty three. I just there are two or three things I I think the public needs to know. First of all. This council has worked hard on this and as tough as things really are. Everyone. Town employees are getting a seven percent raise. The on call. Pay is going to be forty dollars a day now and. Longevity pay will move up to two hundred dollars up to twenty years or four thousand dollars. That's the big changes. Everything else is. Pretty much. Just the seven percent that's in there. Any questions by council? If not, I have a motion to pass ordinance twenty two dash thirty six. Maybe not.
Well.
I'll make a motion.
Taking one last look before approving a document that we've all worked on very hard.
Well, they got to worry about on on this on the you're seeing some pay difference, hourly wage. Now, I mean, this adversely at all. Between the utility office and the clerk treasurer's office, significant difference in hourly wage. Nothing is is good or bad, but. It is a significant significant difference on that. I don't know the workload or the type of work between the clerk treasurer's office versus the utility office. The utility office handles money coming in. I come in and pay cash for my electric bill, then it would be they're handling money. The. I don't know how, but there is quite a bit of difference on the pay between the.
Let me try to explain. Let me, you know, I'm sure you know this, okay? Upstairs, I always call it upstairs clerk treasurer's office. Somehow or another. Salary ordinance about five, six years ago. It slipped in with them. People up there were all deputy clerks and they've made the same as. Linda. And you can't take money away. Okay, believe me, I mean, I agree with you, Paul. There's a big disparity, but I think everyone understands that. You you can't. The only way to correct that is what we've done. We've added a level. If we ever hire anybody up there, they come in at a different level. So that somebody's not starting out making sixty five thousand dollars a year. If that makes sense. And we've done that just because of what happened. Four or five, I don't know how long ago.
Several years ago, yeah.
I think when Bob was president.
Yeah, they probably was. No, I think you're right. If memory serves you right, I think what happened, the clerk treasurer at the time, I think we had. Three secretaries and one was leaving of the area and two were going to remain and the clerk treasurer said. You're going to spread the workload out from instead of three to the two and for them, and they were willing to do that and they got a pay raise. Because they're taking our work instead of the three being two people. And as I recall, this has been several years ago. But that's what the clerk treasurer at that time wanted to do. And we did that while time goes on, different clerk treasurer, different council members. And we are where we are now because it went back to instead of the two, then the staff did expand, but the wages stayed the same, if memory serves you right. So whether we messed up on that or not back at that point in time, it's been how you look at it, I suppose, because it did. The workload was more for the two, but then. As clerk treasurer has changed, then the workload got more dispersed. So so I guess I just look at that, you know, if time goes on inflation, the we give seven percent raise, then the spread gets more so. Just based on the.
Problem for a long time.
Calculation. Yeah, what's a good resolution?
When you got a gap and you give everybody the same note, the gap gets bigger.
It gets better.
That's why it is. Don't rape. That's the real world.
Mm hmm.
Any other comments or questions on the salary ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the salary ordinance.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the. Ordinance twenty two dash thirty six hour for twenty twenty three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I make a motion to suspend the rules first.
Second.
Ordinance twenty two dash thirty six.
I'll second.
I have a motion second spending rules for second reading ordinance twenty two dash thirty six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Make a motion for a second reading for salary ordinance.
I'll second.
They're trying to split it up. I don't know. I have a motion of second for second reading on ordinance twenty two dash thirty six, which is salary orders for twenty twenty three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Salary works is approved. Next one is ordinance twenty two dash thirty seven abolishing the Pendleton Town Court. Lot of discussion on that even today, earlier today. We will, just because laws have changed, we will. On this ordinance, it is for. December thirty first of twenty twenty three, not twenty twenty two. So. Any questions on that from the council? I think I tried to get with everybody. Steve and Steve here.
I can hear you.
We can stand sometimes.
That's all right. I just. So is there. Any questions on it? The judge has been involved with this, myself, Shane, Scott, Willie. It's it's better of a deal than just turn the switch, turn it off. And if you don't do it. Within the end of the year, Jeff, you help me here.
Right.
If we don't do this. By December thirty first. We got to wait four more years. And. It's not that hard to start it back up. When we need to, if we need to. And all this has been a discussion and. Like I said, it's not just turn the switch and you walk out of the courthouse and you're done. It's not that simple.
As far as reinstating the court at a later date, I know we have to do this a year in advance, basically, so it doesn't appear on the ballot for next year is why we're doing this. To reinstate it then, is there a specific year? Like, is there an incremental thing where we need to look at talking about this?
Yeah, yeah, about that.
Okay.
You can do it a little less, that's why I recommend.
Okay.
You have to have it done, but I think it's by the middle of the year before the January that the.
The filings.
New judge will take it. I I would do have one verbiage amendment to twenty two thirty seven as it's written. The the first now therefore be it ordained paragraph where it states is hereby abolished effective December thirty first twenty twenty three. I recommend that say with this with the court's last day of operation being December thirty first twenty twenty three. We the the ordinance itself is not effective on December twenty thirty first twenty twenty three. The ordinance is effective now, but the court will continue to. It's a wing.
Lawyer talk.
Well, yeah, because I don't want I don't want the argument to be that we didn't abolish it until next year, then wow, ah, you can't.
Yeah.
So that's and I will get a updated version.
Okay.
For Jill, well, I should Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff, with the benefit loss to the town, if we abolish the court, any comment on that?
I haven't reviewed that. I I know that I know that the clerk treasurer's offices looked at that. I believe that I believe that members of the council have, but I have not.
What was the question? Benefit loss, if you abolish the court, we've had the court for many years, so if it would dissolve. What does that? How's that impact the town? I know we have.
Terms of dollars.
Well, not not dollars, but just as a benefit, an asset to the town, you have a court and then you abolish the court. Benefits to the town as far as fines and paying fees, that kind of a thing. I know there's been changes in state law over that last pushing twenty years. That have kind of negated the the operation of the court.
Primary benefit, yeah, primary benefit of the court being here is a convenience for local citizens.
The public.
Particularly on ordinance violations and things of that nature. That can be obviated a little bit by creating an ordinance bureau. Letting those be processed that way. A lot of that stuff goes. Through that way.
So you can still address that issue.
You can still even address that issue. Now, things like infractions, which gets held here, those are not town issued tickets necessarily. Those could be based on state law. Some of those folks don't live local. Generally, the people violate ordinances live local. But the people that. That get speeding tickets a lot of times don't. And so that takes some convenience a little bit away from. In those cases, well, ultimately those infractions, that's one of the reasons for the wind up period, I think, that was discussed. Give that a chance to figure out where those cases are going to be moved. They could be there's three three candidates, the Elwood City Court, the Anderson City Court and Madison County Circuit. So any of those have jurisdiction here, infraction. But.
So the big issue would be convenience to the public, local citizens, as far as you have the court now, you come in and address those issues versus we abolish it. It goes away, they'd have to go to Anderson or.
Or infraction or we already know your misdemeanors here, so it.
So there's some cost benefit on whether you do or you don't.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Chat? Hello? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty two dash thirty seven.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second to approve. Ordinance twenty two dash thirty seven with corrections that Jeff has brought up to us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and have the second reading.
I'll second.
Motion second spin the rules for second reading on ordinance twenty two dash thirty seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion for second reading of twenty two dash thirty seven.
I have the motion in a second. For the second reading of ordinance twenty two dash thirty seven abolishing the Pendleton Town Court with the corrections that Jeff brought up. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, we're just going to stay here for just a second.
Okay, the next one is resolution R twenty two dash eleven.
I'm waiting.
Appropriation for the park board. I'll let Karen do that.
I'm standing here.
Okay.
The December one still shows the two payments that that two thousand thirteen series A and B, those were absorbed into the new twenty twenty two bond. Says I have to have the new creation, so it shows up on our. So they want that on there that that's the payment stewardship, so the two payments of working with this. Even though the money is there, because we requested, you still have. So that's what this is. It's not any other, it's not any additional money that I would pass, it's money that was already given to them in the tax.
Any more questions? Is that? Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Okay, can I have a motion for resolution R twenty two dash eleven?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have motion second for resolution R twenty two dash eleven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Next one is resolution R twenty two dash twelve, South Madison Fire Territory salaries, twenty twenty three salaries. This is. By the M O U.
Right.
They have to do this, just like the park does, send us a resolution. We've got this, I think, late last night. We got this, I think, late last night, yesterday. Any questions on this?
This, this council really is not a resolution for, for you to pass, what you have in front of you is a resolution of the executive board. They're required to provide this to you, and this is, your action on this just couldn't merely be to accept the resolution as presented. You don't need, you're not voting on the guts of the thing. That, that was already passed by the executive board. The operating agreement with the Fire Territory Board delegates the authority on salaries and incremental pay to the fire board. That's what they did with the budget. Optimally, this would have come with the budget, but we're all stumbling a bit the first time to get the paperwork just right. There's no harm, no foul. What this document does is give information to our clerk treasurer. What are you basing your salaries on? This thing right here. So it's a more of an instruction manual to our clerk treasurer's office or SBOA. Now, the only action needs to be taken is a, accepting the resolution, the Fire Territory Resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution R twenty-two dash twelve.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second for resolution R twenty-two days twelve for the South Madison Fire Territory two thousand and twenty-three salaries. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Next one is the resolution for R twenty-two dash thirteen ARP expenditures. Pretty self-explanatory in all honesty here. We've added, since the last meeting, this is more housekeeping, cleaning up, make sure we're doing everything right as far as spending this money. We've added the police body armor for their ceramic vest, and we've added money for the access control for the fire department. So, rest of stuff's on there. The council members looked at, any questions on this resolution?
Make a motion to approve R twenty-two dash thirteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second for resolution R twenty-two dash thirteen ARP expenditures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Quick question for that. Chief, on how effective is on the shielding? Will that stop a nine-millimeter round from how many feet away, do you know?
Yes, it says it will. I mean, I think bulletproof.
Right.
The word bulletproof, the upgraded panels that you're creating real money at now, we have the ceramics. And the ceramics are extremely heavy, but they will stop seven-six-two, AK forty-seven rounds, two-three AR fifteen rounds, and three oh eights. The, the one sphere is, you get into ballistics of the green tip rifle wounds, that's a whole different thing. And so, the ceramic plates expired at five years. This new technology, the warranty on the plates that were purchased are now fifteen years, which is awesome. And thus, only would stop seven-six-two to two-three. Yeah. Pass, what you did is you, because we all break weapons to the scene, so each of us have forty caliber handguns on us right now. We'll bring forty caliber weapons, you want protection from your own weapon. And then we have rifles, the thought is, get that upgraded, and of course, if you watch the news. So, the fifteen-year warranty is huge, the, you have to stop rifle rounds is awesome. I just spent the other day with one of our donation money, thirty-three hundred dollars on ballistic shield. knee caps to the top of your head maybe, but it'll stop two-three, seven-six-two rounds. So, increasing that ability is awesome.
It's terrible.
Yeah. If, if you watch the school shootings, watch the ball league video, they weren't able to go down the hallway and some shield showed up. It's not suicide mission to walk down that wall, you get protection to go down that wall. And I was creating a back to back nine under Superintendent Doug Carter, and I told him that, I said, it's troll, but I'm willing to go down the hallway, but you need to outfit me for. And back then, I'm giving the speech a couple times, SWAT teams sound all fancy and special, but all it means is special weapons and tactics. And all that means is, it's cheaper to buy three rifles with three guys and put them on a team than twelve of my men who are the first to respond to the scene. So, when Columbine happened, if, I've researched all this stuff, I constantly look at these things and wonder how I would respond if they had. Columbine, the theory was, first responders set up forever and you waited on SWAT. Well, during the time of waiting on SWAT, they're actively in the school shooting. The training changed that one. Then it was the first four officers on the scene. Walked in and you made a special, it's a cool looking little diamond footprint, and you made your way down the hall and you cut down the shooter. Well, then they found out it took too long to have four officers show up. So, the new training is, you're on the scene, you're in the building. Well, that's fine to dance, but I need the equipment to go in, and that's where it's expected. Shield, the stand has now thirty-three hundred dollars. I just had lunch with the director of the criminal justice institute, about grand, I put in a grant to South Madison Foundation for another one. Hopefully, I'll get awarded that here soon. But gotta give guys the protection in order to complete the job. Fifteen-year warranty on which person now is, is one.
And they're a lot lighter, correct?
And they're a lot lighter, absolutely. In fact, a lot of the officers, they just wear them all the time. There's that one. So that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or any other questions or comments? Motion.
Make a motion to approve R twenty-two dash thirteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion of second for the ARP expenditures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you.
Twice for good measure.
There you go.
We're enthusiastic about this one.
Okay, the next one is Benton Police Flock Group Service Agreement. Chief, you want to talk about it real quick? I mean, there's, it's pretty cut and dry.
Right. I need to get out too much information on the flock cameras.
Right.
So, what this system is, is they are cameras, and they are Wi-Fi based, and they are placed around the town of Pendleton, and they're placed around county. The county has a number of them. LaPelle has them, Ingles has them, going to Anton County, they have them, going to Hamilton County, they have them. And what this does is now we can read all the cameras and all, anybody that's a member of this agreement, we have access to the cameras. So, for the citizens of the town of Pendleton, if you are not wanted, if you didn't just commit a crime and we're chasing you, if you're not a, a wanted felon, if you're not a bad guy, you will not even care that these things are on the side of the road. If you want it, this is the way we can chase you down and arrest. And it's an awesome tool. The, the artificial intelligence that's related to these is getting the technology, just read license plates. Now it reads a whole bunch of different things when it comes to searching for a vehicle, and then tracking those vehicles. Great system to be part of. So, cameras we're purchasing, we're part of a huge network. Ingles has already seen a lot of, covered a lot of stolen vehicles, made a lot of arrests, was in there. We're excited to be able to.
So this really isn't a resolution or anything? What do we need, Jim?
You are agreeing to execute the services agreement as presented. I, I've reviewed it. The only minor change that I have would be on the last page, there's a spot for the agency notices. At the top, we already have chief bar on there. We should also have a copy sent to the town hall. For, that's if somebody gets a disagreement about, hey, you're not doing this town of Pendleton. Well, if it just goes to chief bar, I, I think it should also go to the town, the hall. It's on the very last page. Services agreement. Whatever that looks good. The price there is on page two.
Any questions, comments? It's very piece of equipment.
Yeah, it's a good project, yes.
So, what do we need to install a resolution? We just need the authority for.
Approved agreement to enter into the, the contract.
Make a motion to enter in the contract for the flock camera.
I'll second it. I have a motion of second. Agreement, the flock group service agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Next one is for the Motorola Police Body Camera Agreement.
It's the pretty.
Okay, what this is on the body cameras agreements, so that we can enter into the agreement for the police department and Motorola. Questions, comments?
Just real quick, go back all the way to nineteen ninety-four, and Paul Wilson bought the first DHS car-mounted police camera system, and it was as big as a couple lunchbox. And the officers hated it. Move ahead, and now, the technology of the cameras we used to have, the software, kind of like the distractions with and they're falling apart, there's no software, there's no, no way to continue building on the equipment yet. So we've moved to this system, and the guys are chomping at the bit to have. It's, when people call them a complaint, it is so nice to say, let me check the video, and they usually normally say, well, there's no need for that, chief, I'm just calling in. Okay, because you know, my officer did his job, and it's safe to do it like that. But then it also gives us great evidence for case. So DUI arrests, domestic batteries, different things, it's all important, and the prosecutor loves it. And anymore, we live in a world, then if there's no video, then you must be lying. So we try every, every chance we get, we try to have everything. Great system, Watchdog, it, the body cameras are together, the software, the input cameras, they all speak to each other, and it's a great choice. We just got to be very involved.
A bunch of. Okay, kind of a motion to go into this agreement on the Motorola body cam, body cam cameras.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve this agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you.
One advantage that we have, obviously, without the mention, Jerry, Austin Branson, he's a technical wizard, and he's also worked with Watchdog in the past, and he's doing some of the software updates and stuff.
Okay, the next, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Next, next thing is the fee, fee agreement with town attorney. I'm not gonna let him talk about this, okay? This will be the fourth year coming up. The town attorney, I'm requesting that we give him a raise. He's, he's not got any raise since we hired him, okay? Guy puts in a lot of, I'm on the soapbox, everybody puts in a lot of time for the town of Pendleton, between all the different boards and commissions in this body right here. So, are there any questions or comments from the council? That's part of the salary, not salary agreement, but it's the way it needs to be done in the open. So is there any questions or comments?
I would agree. I think we need to, need to bump that. He's just looking inflation alone. Jeff does a good job with the town, lives here, he's vested in the community. Big, big asset to us.
Yes. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion for, I guess that's for me to go into the free agreement, fee agreement with the town attorney.
Have, have you already done that, or do we?
I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Looks like a that.
Okay, I got a second and a first and a second on the fee agreement for the town attorney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next thing on the bill or the agenda is the Med Bill Service Agreement. We're gonna table that because there's some questions come up today, and we're, anyway, we're gonna table that. Next thing is the McCarty Drain. Scott?
So, the McCarty Project is rebuilding a whole legal drain that was restricted with the county. After we put in for a grant. Like you know, as he said earlier, that they added the reconstruction of road intersection because we found that culprit underneath there. The bid opening for phase one and two, which is phase one is the reconstruction of the intersection. Phase two is putting down new storm line from Pendleton Avenue through the open field, through properties that line up on Broadway through the Amets, which, you know, experiences a lot of flooding. And then, that's the end of phase two, when it hits the railroad tracks. Phase three, which is not part of this, will be to four underneath railroad track, four underneath sixty-seven, connect there at the burn properties. They're on the opposite side of sixty-seven, which tie, tie into the old field grates. It came in spectacular, it was two, more than two hundred thousand, less the estimate. The grant coming in. All for the town. The contractor who won the bid is anxious to get going because it's been so dry, like to take advantage of the, the dry weather, the pad, the low water table. You know, a bunch of rain coming in, water tables. So we're fast tracking it, so that's why we're coming to you and adding this to the agenda of the day and approving it. Except the bid. Fast track it, need to start, deep water, this is all the other paperwork.
It's very important for the, that drain out there. It's been a problem for years and years. Lot of work been put into this by Scott. Water department, or street department's been out there. A lot of work's went into this. Scott's right. This bid is almost two hundred, hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars under what the engineers. Yeah, so, any questions, comments for Scott on this? If not, I need a motion for the town to waive this agreement with, I don't even know the United Construction Services.
That, that's.
Yeah, right.
I'll make a motion after we enter this agreement.
I'll second.
Got a motion of second for the agreement on the drain. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Public comments?
An update on, say, the baby box?
Yes, please.
So our goal was to raise twenty thousand, and whatever we get above that is great because we can use it for our We have, now our goal, we are fully funded. The baby box was ordered last week, so that takes six to eight weeks to get that baby box done. We'll then be working with the alarm companies that Chief Donahue already fixed, and also, for line construction is going to be doing the install, so we'll work on the next phase. for line construction is gonna be doing the install, so we'll work on the next phase, get everything lined up, um. The cool thing about this project was we had over a hundred different people donate. That tells you we have such huge support for this community, and it really is truly gonna be a community project, which is very nice. The council could have voted to pay for it, but it's been really a lot more fun to see the five dollars and ten dollars and twenty. Everybody feels like they're part, huge community support. And just to tell a quick story, um, the lady that has done the same payment, uh, just reported just like a week ago that a fifteen-year-old had had a child and took it, put it in the woods. Um, somebody found out somehow, I don't know, but they did recover the baby and take it to the hospital, don't know the outcome yet, but this is what that hopefully will prevent, is somebody being scared of having a baby. And, and not having a place to go, not having a place to, uh, do anything with. Uh, so we'll do advertisement, um, and all kinds of stuff to make sure people know it's available. Bob's gonna be help, uh, we've had, uh, some big donors through people who are connected through the town, uh, who have donated money. And, uh, people I didn't even know about who had foundations who heard about it and sent money. So it's been really a blessing to see that. Hopefully, if all goes well, and we can do it before Christmas, that'd be great. Um, if not, it'll be in January when they do, they'll do an event, and the lady who started it will come here. And we'll do the baby box blessing and, uh, all that. We're on our way, so.
Thanks.
Great.
And we're still saving donations, donations don't stop because we will, every dime we get that we can advertise and let people know about. We still have some money promised that's coming to us also. We will continue to take money for that, so.
Thanks, you do. Appreciate it. Any other public input? If not, meeting adjourned.